All right, it is 7:00 on Thursday, December 8th at Albernate City Hall. This is our regular council meeting for the month of December. So we will call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise and join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you could please give us a roll call.
Councilman Trump?
President.
Councilman Bozenberg?
President.
Councilman Schontz?
President.
Councilman Myers?
President.
Note that PJ is not here.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. With that, I would seek approval of the agenda with one change. We are going to pull out of new business recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Committee Board. We're going to move that just under our Sheriff's Report. So that will be item number six on the agenda. Are there any other changes, clerk?
There are no other changes.
Perfect. So with that, I would seek motion to approve the agenda with the stated changes.
So moved.
Moved by Schontz, seconded by Bozenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll recognize our sheriff's deputy.
It looked like 43 hours or 14 calls of service. Everything looked pretty routine.
Okay. Any questions for the sheriff?
I'm getting a few complaints about the parents parking on Roosevelt, waiting to pick up their kids after school. And it's definitely they're parking in no parking zones, but they're in their cars, but they're parking rather poorly. So I don't know if there's a way to...
To get them after school and meet them?
Yeah, that 3:30 timeframe. I mean, they're half hanging over the railroad tracks and half out into Main Avenue because they don't want to go find another place to park.
Okay.
And it's construction-related, and it'll get better. But in the meantime...
It is a hazard, so...
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Keep safe.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right. Next item will be we'll recognize Mr. Jim Carver for the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Committee Board meeting.
Thank you. We had a board meeting last week, and there were three items that we discussed, and all three of them were passed unanimously by that board.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So that's in relation to the rezoning of...
Yes.
Three properties, is that correct?
Yeah.
From single resident to multi-resident.
Yeah. One went to multifamily, and the other two went from R1 to R2.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carver?
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our public hearing for the CDBG proposed grant application submission. Do we have proof of publication for the public hearing?
We do.
Wonderful. All right. Well, I will declare the hearing open. I think first and foremost, did we have any questions or comments come in from the public?
The only comment that I had was, is this Section 8 housing? Which it is not.
Good clarification. And then Tracy, I believe you've got some...
Oh, I have fun, yes.
Some materials to present for us.
Yep. Okay. So I usually start this part with an apology because there are things that as... Because you're applying for community development block grant funding, this happens to be community development block grant disaster recovery funding, there are certain things I have to cover in a public hearing. So I've already written it out so that I can just read it off to make sure because I have to have it in your minutes. So I'm just going to read it. And the first one is how the need for the proposed activity or project was identified. The city of Albernate has determined that CDBG DR funding assistance would be greatly beneficial in helping to create additional rental units in the community. Landlords report they have waiting lists for persons wishing to rent in the community. The school district has many students who attend the school but are not able to find available housing in the community. The August 10th, 2020 derecho storm impacted housing availability throughout Iowa and most significantly in Lynn County. This created even more pressure to create rental housing in the community. That's number one. Number two is I have to how the proposed activity will be funded. The construction of six rental units in Albernate will be funded with $570,000 in CDBG DR funds and private developer funds of an estimated amount of $938,235. The application will be submitted online no later than December 30th at 3:00 PM. The amount of the federal funds to be requested, as I've already said, is $570,000. 66.6% of the funds will benefit households with incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. That's the low to moderate income level, 80%. So I think I might have said last time, but maybe I didn't, and I didn't bring my full chart. But for a single person in Lynn County, they can be considered low to moderate income and have income of $50,050. Okay? A two-person household is probably about $53,000, $54,000. A four-person household is probably around $70,000. So that's considered to be LMI. Okay? The proposed activity will be located at 130 Third Street and 201, 206, and 212 Roosevelt Street in Albernate. One of the things that you have to do is you state your plans to minimize displacement of persons and businesses as a result of the activity. So the thing that I say is due to the project being new construction, no displacement is anticipated to occur. But then I have to say what happens if someone has to be displaced. So any persons displaced as a result of the project will be asked to find housing that is let safe and which to relocate. The developer will reimburse anyone displaced as a result of the project for any housing costs and expenses that exceed their current housing cost for a period of time as required by federal regulations. And then the last thing is the nature of the proposed project. This project will, number one, remove an existing garage and replace it with a new one with a residential rental unit above the garage at two different locations, 130 Third Street and 206 Roosevelt, and build a duplex with two rental units and a garage with a residential unit above the garage at 212 Roosevelt, and build a cottage for rent in addition to the existing home that is already there, and the cottage will be real chair accessible at 201 Roosevelt. Four of the six units will be rented to low to moderate income households, so those income levels that I just talked about, for a period of 20 years. And all units will be marketed for the first four months to rent to households who were derecho impacted. That's one of the requirements of the grant. Okay? So that's the first thing that I have to cover in the public hearing. We have other stuff later on the agenda. The next thing that I have to do as a requirement is I have to take public input on a community development and housing needs assessment. So basically, what they want us to do is identify three or four items that you think are community development and housing needs specifically to low to moderate income people in your community. You also then have to identify three or four items that you feel are community development and housing needs for everyone in the community, and then plan, identify planned activities. So it used to be that we would sort of type this up and give it to communities, and then the city councils would approve it. They don't let us do that anymore. We have to actually ask for comment. But I'm just going to give you some ideas, and then you can tell me whether to include it or take it out. Okay? Or if you have ideas of your own. For the community development and housing needs for low to moderate income persons, prioritize rehab of existing housing stock, particularly because about half of your housing stock was built before 1970, which causes me heartburn to realize that's old, but I guess it is. And... And actually, according to the census, about a quarter of your homeowners in Albernate are also low to moderate income. Like, a lot of times at those income levels, it's pretty easy for seniors to meet that criteria. So I don't know whether you would want to keep as an identified need the need to help people with rehab of existing housing stock. This is not saying you're going to do it. You just have to... What we have to say in this is that you have a need for rental units for both low to moderate income, because obviously that's what you're applying for. The rest of it is just things whatever you think. Another one we have used is increase opportunities. A need would be to increase opportunities for home purchases for low to moderate income home buyers through partnership programs or other affordable housing components. One of my staff collected data and said the typical home value in Albernate is $260,000 compared to the state of Iowa, which is $199,000. So that would make homeownership probably non-attainable for a lot of folks. So that could be one. One of them could be... We're going to keep this one. Increased opportunity for affordable rental units for low to moderate income renters. 65% of... According to the census already, 65% of your current renters meet the low to moderate income criteria. Housing affordability could be supported through zoning permitting and offering technical assistance. And then more on the community development side, enhance public service delivery to accommodate the needs of low to moderate incomes, such as providing more recreation activities, a possibility to help with energy improvements. I don't know how your broadband is, how your internet connection is, but, you know, increased access broadband.
We've got fiber in town, so...
No, it's pretty good.
Okay. Okay. I'm X-ing that one for sure.
I'll take them off.
Any other thoughts on any of the other ones? Or are there other ones? Like, when I looked at your goal-setting thing that you did with Karen not very long ago, there was a lot of street stuff. There was a lot of infrastructure stuff.
We've been in the planning and infrastructure phase. And I will say, I think the home values speak to, from a housing perspective, where we've been as a town. We've had an aggressive developer doing a lot of work on behalf, and we appreciate that he's done that. But those have been all new, higher-end goals.
Higher end, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So an increased opportunity for home purchase for low to moderate income home buyers may not be, you know... I mean, it might be a good thing to include if you want to. This is for low to moderate income specifically. Like I said, I'd like you to keep the increased opportunity for affordable rental units. What about rehab of existing owner-occupied homes?
Absolutely. I mean, we've seen quite a bit of remodel. We've had probably four or five turnover, change ownership in the last few years that have been almost complete rehab jobs.
So...
I would include that as a goal, yes.
Okay. So these are needs right now. I'll get to your goals in a second. Okay? What about the housing affordability supported through zoning permitting and technical assistance? Now, I will say what you just did helps with housing affordability, right? To be able to put more units on one. So you really have done that. So if we could keep that one in there as a need because you did do that.
That's fine.
Okay. So the other community development and housing needs, increase opportunities for economic development through efficient and well-maintained infrastructure. So these are community development and housing needs for everyone in the community. And like I said, because of what I saw for your goals in regard to infrastructure and streets, I think that one would be a need that you would want to have in there. Enhanced business opportunities to increase workforce participation in the community. Is that something that you think is a need?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We do have the Main Street Rehab as part of our five-year goals.
Okay. How about... One of them is expand housing options for those aged 65 and over. Almost 12% of your population is that age. Mayor, my staff for some wrote senior citizens in here. I don't like that a bit. Okay. Those 65 and over, I'll say it that way. Require adequate housing alternatives to remain in the community because that is one thing I hear in a lot of the smaller towns is older folks want to stay in the community, but they don't necessarily have the options to be able to do that. So expand housing, expanded housing options for those aged 65 and over. Anyway, I don't know what you think about that. And that's for everybody. That's not just low to moderate. And then, of course, we do have to say something about rentals. So expand owner-occupied and rental housing options to accommodate the existing population and future growth. You have a pretty low vacancy rate according... So, you know, obviously you want to be able to build stuff. Most of those, except for the first one... Well, the second one too. So two of them were about housing, and two of them were about community development. Does anybody have any other things they would want to put in? Okay? Okay. So the last thing is your planned or potential activities. So basically, I think Deanna took this in my office, took this from your goal-setting. Of course, one of the things that we have to say is you're applying for funding under the Community Development Block Grant DR program to increase housing options for renter households. And probably she got this right out of it. Prioritize street park recreation and public service improvements to make the best use of public dollars and provide amenities and opportunities to attract and retain residents. It looks like these were specific to years. Engage an engineering firm to evaluate street conditions and develop replacement plan.
That's been done.
Okay. Let's take that out then. Engage... This has probably been done too because this is an FYI 22. Engage community to assess potential amenities for a new fire station park.
Yep.
Okay?
Can you add continue to and keep them?
Continue to evaluate? Sure. If that's... Yeah.
If that is.
Continue to evaluate street conditions and...
I mean, if it's beneficial to have those comments in there.
Sure.
It's a rolling program, right? Yeah, it's a rolling program that H.R. Green has already set for us that goes through each street, and it's definitely not going to be done in one year.
Right.
So it'll be continued.
So you think...
Reevaluated.
Yeah, as we go along.
We could say continue to evaluate street conditions and develop future plans or something like that for replacement. Okay? Thank you. One of them you had was evaluate Donald Drive for infrastructure expansion and residential development. That was for this fiscal?
We haven't been able to make contact with the landowners that would allow that development.
Should I keep it in there as a goal or...?
Yes, hopefully something can happen.
Okay.
It's an area of potential, so...
Okay. The next one was engage Planning and Zoning Commission to review existing comp plan and make recommendations to facilitate residential and commercial growth.
That still needs to happen.
Okay. And then this one was out there. A ways, but reconstruct Main Street from Third Street to Roosevelt. And we can keep that in there. These are generally good for two years. So like, for instance, if you were going to apply for some other funding, federal funding source, they're probably going to require this to be done. So I like to cover other things so that if you do have things on your radar that you're thinking about, that they're in here, you know? Because then if it's within the next two years, you don't have to recreate. Okay. So then the next one was continue to update and review city of Albernate goals and capital improvement plan to establish or expand services. Enhancing public safety and insurance services are provided at affordable rates for persons with low to moderate income. Remodel the fire station and pursue grant opportunities for a new generator and wellhouse. Was that done?
The generator has not. We are in the process of remodeling the old fire station. We are under contract with an architect. We should go out to bid soon.
Okay. Are you guys going to do the generator through the CDBG DR program?
We hadn't discussed that that was even a possibility. We looked at FEMA, and one part of the FEMA grant process fell through. So then we kind of stalled. I understand there is another possible direction to go with FEMA, but...
So they... So when they dedicated money for Lynn County for the disaster, they dedicated the vast majority is for housing, but there is some for generators, and there's some for tree canopy. And those are going to be rolling out. Another person in our office, the person that does the environmental stuff, Jennifer Fensel, she is the one that's going to be doing the generator one. I think they're awarding up to $100,000.
I would do it.
So I would encourage you to pursue it if... So we need to have it in here because then you would be probably having to do this again, but you wouldn't if we have it.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay? So... Remodel the fire station, is that complete?
No.
So we're remodeling the old fire station into City Hall because we currently rent this space.
Oh, that's right. That's what we were talking about before. Okay.
So we're remodeling our old fire station for City Hall.
Okay. I'm leaving that one the way it is, and you're relocating City Hall then, right?
Yes.
And improve website to include mobility capability to increase access.
That's in progress.
Do you want me to leave it in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think that's enough for your community development and housing needs assessment. The minutes will read that it was prepared, and then your resolution that I did for the support of the project. I tried to put everything in there, and one line in there is that you've adopted this, as we've talked about tonight, as your community development and housing needs assessment. Okay? And I get to write down how many people are here, and usually I don't get to say anybody. So one, two, three, four, five, six. How exciting.
Jim Love, he counts. Jim Love, he counts.
I'll put seven then. Okay. That's all I have to cover in the public hearing portion.
Perfect. Any other comments for the public hearing? The public or council? I do have one clarifying... Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
I wonder why you have to move from here. This seems adequate to me for...
We rent this space, and we don't have any control over the rent price. And so we've actually figured it out. For what it's going to cost to remodel the fire station, we would be, we're going to be ahead in 10 years of what it costs to rent this space.
Okay. Why not just move this into the new fire station? They've got...
Because it's not central to town. We've gotten feedback before that people like to have City Hall central to town so if they're walking to drop off their water bills, if they're at the post office. So we're trying to keep things centralized.
I'm more concerned with the money that you're wasting when you redo the...
Actually, we're not wasting the money.
We're not, and that's not related to...
Part of this is because this was a COVID grant that we got, and that was part of what we worked on. And it is for both my protection because there is no exit door here. It is from protection from people walking in. With any kind of COVID, disease, or whatever, I have no protection to that.
So I'm going to pause this conversation because it's not related to the CBGDR grant. But during public comment, you're more than welcome to bring that up because it is on the agenda. So, thank you. So I do have one question, just clarifying. Tracy, are there any matching fund requirements for this grant that the city would have to match any of the funding?
For this one, no. That's why I said that it was the developer funds and the CDG funds. Yep.
Perfect.
How close is this to coming together by the end of the month?
Well... I still need a few items. I mean, the application...
Is there a good chance of getting it all done by the end of the month yet?
Well, it has to be or doesn't go in. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
My plans for taking off between Christmas and New Year's are not happening. So...
Oh, okay.
That's how it is.
It's understandable.
Okay.
Any other public comment or council comment for the CDBGDR... I can't say it. CDBGDR grant application submission? Move. All right. Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Moved by Trump, seconded by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Public hearing is closed. All right. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I would just like to, first of all, take an opportunity to wish everyone happy holidays, whatever you do choose to celebrate. I hope you get to do so safely and in whatever manner brings you joy and feels good about it because it's not all the same for all of us. Before I came over, I just was doing a little reflecting on 2022. It was kind of a crazy ride, and I just want to recognize, do a little year in review and recognize all that we've gotten accomplished together. Each one of you are reflected in these, so I just want to thank you all in one shot that we maintained a balanced budget for the end of last fiscal year. We're on track to do the same this year. Guy graciously once again stepped in as clerk when we had that turnover. Thankfully, this one was much shorter than last time because Chris onboarded so quickly. Grateful for you to hop in and just take the reins that you have. We have, we started a farmer's market for the community with support from council as well as our friends at the school. We survived water main breaks during holiday seasons and water tower leaks that then led to great projects that we were able to complete in a very timely way. We've implemented new systems and processes. We now have a rental space for our community to use at the fire station. We completed our street report and our sewer mapping. We did the park survey, completed the punch list at the fire station. We completed the water rate analysis, while maybe not our most favorite thing to do was a long time coming. And it's really put us, put us ahead as far as being able to remain fiscally responsible. And then I've got two on here that are more wish lists of mine that by the end of the year, we will have finished recodification. Chris got me all of his notes. I just need to finish going through them. And we are on, in progress to do our website migration from our current provider to GoDaddy, as was approved at a previous meeting. So those are just the things that came to mind for me. It was a heck of a year, so thank you all. And here's to 2023 and all that is to come. So with that, I will hand it over for council reports. And I'll start with Councilor Myers.
Nothing to...
Councilor Schultz?
Well, right now, Joe and I and Chris are working on the budget. And anyone that has any projects or needs, needs to be funded. You need to tell Chris so we can put him in the budget.
By, I would say by...
By January.
By January 1st.
By January, because on the, pretty much everything by then.
Yep, all wish list items by January.
Yep.
We'll be sure to ask the same of our fire chief as well, make sure he's got his list done. Is that all?
That's all I have.
Councilor Bozenberg?
I just, that Public Works has done a good job, Chris has done a good job, and the committee to get the new banners and Christmas lights up this year. So hopefully that committee will get more done next year. Looks good. Christmas tree looks great.
Hasn't blown over yet.
It's not gonna blow over.
Councilor Trump? We have now reached the citizen comment portion of the agenda, so we have two types of comments, those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. If you do have a comment, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and we ask that you keep comments to a five-minute limit. So are there any citizen comments on agenda-related items?
I have a comment coming in.
Yep.
And I know it's not the towns or spot, it's the railroad track up here, and there's no stop sign.
Well, the blinking light, Thursdays.
There's nothing there. And for instance, tonight, when we were coming down here, she didn't hear it, but I was driving, I heard it. I heard it blow whistle, and there was train coming, and boy, it just swished right through there. And there was no stop sign or anything for us to stop at all. It's just lucky I heard it, that's all. Or we'd have been, we wouldn't have been here tonight, I'll tell you that right now. It was going like hell, and it went right through there. And I don't know who puts pressure on to put a stop sign there or something, but somebody should be able to.
Yeah, we can definitely ask. I'm sure they probably have thresholds on number of fatalities at intersections, but definitely worth asking. I would also, I do also know they have speed limits going through towns, so we can ask for...
He was going like, pretty, pretty...
They are much like airplanes in that all of that data gets recorded, so can we please follow up with our railroad representative with complaint about some speeding through town?
In your name?
It's, it's a bad location because there's a high bank there, and you can't see...
Well, there's a house there, too.
And you can't see up the, up the tracks at all.
Is that...
And we just came down there, came across this and came down here. Fortunately, I heard it.
First Street.
She didn't.
Is that the only intersection? Because we have three crossings in town, that's the only non-marked, I'd say, no lights or crossing.
Yeah.
Well, that one has a yield sign.
But no, no train indicators, I guess is what I... The one out Burnett Station had, at least has the flashing lights.
Yeah, you know, if you just had something that has flashing, flashing light when it runs rail coming its way, you know? But there's nothing there, I mean, I'm surprised somebody hasn't been filled there already.
Yep.
Really, yeah.
With the school building project and the parking lot lights are not on like they were, and the extension of the building, it makes visibility different.
Well, he's talking about First Street.
This is one up past the convenience store.
Yeah, straight up...
I don't know what street that is.
What's that street?
First Street.
First, first.
First Street.
Up there, yeah, dark.
That's a, a bad crossing, I know that.
We can report that and see what, see what their response is. We'll most definitely report the complaint of speeding. I think it's a 20 mile an hour limit going through town, so, and I've definitely seen them not doing that.
They were going a lot faster than 40 mile an hour, better than that. They were going more like 50 mile an hour.
All right, any other comments?
This one you, we talked about.
Yeah, say who you are.
My name's Dan McMoran, and I just wanna state against again that I think that the rental inspection thing is... I haven't talked to anybody that thought it was a good idea, other than maybe here, but it's just... Another thing that we really don't need in Albert Net, I don't think.
And that's why Larry and I are here also.
Yeah.
It just...
I don't think it's necessarily...
I don't think you want the county involved in it. I think the city here can work it out on their own. We always have for years.
We don't have any certified inspectors on staff?
We don't need...
Why would you need an inspector?
Who owns property that's going to have chatty work?
Any property in town could be a rental. And so we need to, as, as we stated before, this program is designed to protect the renters from being in dangerous buildings, because all the things on the checklist are safety-related, and it also protects the landlords from false claims by renters. Because with that certificate of certified inspection, you are then covered to say the county has signed off. This is a safe building, it meets their requirements. We, we, we do not staff any inspectors. We use Lynn County for our new construction, for any other home improvement. If I, as a homeowner, non-renter, were to want to do an addition or make a change to my house, Lynn County would come do that inspection. They would inspect that work as brand-new work. So I also appreciate their services in helping to inspect and keep our rental properties safe and up to code.
But that costs everybody in Albert Net money.
It does not.
Huh?
The city does not pay for that program.
No, but the renters are gonna have to pay, you know, I mean, it's not us.
Somebody's gotta pay for it, for crying out loud. And I know who pays for it.
If a building falls out of repair or is not up to standard, that has to be paid for, too.
For sure. We're going through that right now. We're, we're repairing, we're repairing ours, but we didn't need a building inspector to tell us it needed repairing. We're repairing it because we know it needs it. We haven't been dictated to do this or anything, but we're, we're gonna put in that four-room apartment that we've got up there, we're gonna put about $20,000 in it, just to bring it back up to what we think is in good shape. Now, why should I have to pay additional money to have somebody inspect it and tell me what it needs?
Not everybody cares for their properties as you do.
I think anybody that owns rental property plans on keeping them up.
Absolutely.
That is not, that is not an absolute statement.
You know, every time... We're, we're behind right now, but that's because of all these rains and winds and storms that we had just in this last fall. If we'd have known this place had the problems that it has, we'd have picked it last summer. But it wa, it wasn't bad last summer.
Would an inspection have let you know that earlier?
What?
Would an inspection have let you know that earlier?
Hell, no. It was the wind and, and stuff like that this fall that did all the problems, made all the problems for us. Inspecting it wouldn't have done it this. We, we, we've inspected, we inspected ourselves, and when we find something's wrong with it, we try to fix it. And we've got somebody already planning to come in there and fix it. We have an estimate of $20,000 to fix it. And we're, and we're gonna get them in there as soon as we can. I don't know, I just think that inspections from outside inspectors is a waste of funding. That's what I think.
We appreciate your comments.
Pardon?
So we appreciate your comments.
Well, I don't think you're taking them of value.
We are.
We are.
We're listening. Any other comments?
I didn't pay for inspections that I don't need. And that's it.
Any other comments on agenda-related items? Hearing none, non-agenda-related items? We'll move on to written reports. Start with the fire department. Unfortunately, Chief Graham cannot be with us this evening, but you do have his report in your packet. So for November, there were eight calls for service. Looks like six in the township, a mutual aid for Central City, and one in the city. There was some training conducted along with their meeting. We discussed at the last meeting, as we're looking to disposition truck number 135, what equipment we needed to take out, since he does note that the radio's been removed from 135 and is now stored in the station. Chief is currently on medical restriction, so Assistant Chief Ford will be acting chief until we receive a release for Chief Graham. And then the final item on the report, he does indicate that they have two cadets that would like to join, and that they're working with the city to get a program going. I do want to make note that I've reached out to Chief Graham about the cadet program. It's something we discussed earlier this year. We do not currently have any cadets. We do not currently have policies and procedures in place for a cadet program. The other things that I have asked him, that if he wishes to continue with the cadet program, we need to find policies and procedures, which includes a training plan, because I think previously they were not treated much different than, you know, a lower-level department member, and therefore, you know, as, as a cadet, they need a certain training plan, and I'd like to see that outlined. And then also a recruiting plan, because this is a program that brings a lot of risk and liability for the city, and I wanna make sure that it's going to be something sustainable. So we, we need to have a recruiting plan. It can't just be something that we ebb and flow as we have one or two people that are interested, because there's just so much that goes into making sure it's successful. I've also mentioned that for each cadet, I would want a mentor within the department, and that would be part of their training plan as well. So we've not seen any of that. It did come to my attention that one cadet was potentially already signed into the department. I have asked that all access and equipment be removed for that individual, that he is not to participate as part of the department. We do not have a cadet program. Next steps from here will be to get those policies and procedures, run them. They have to be approved by our insurance company, and then those will be presented to council for your review and approval, because as it stands today, we do not have a cadet program. So as far as I'm concerned, we are starting from scratch on that. So that's, that's my update as far as the last line of his report. And then I know, Chris, you've done some talking to insurance. He's reached out to Marion because they do have some policies and procedures they were willing to share with us. So do you have anything to add in regards to that?
No, they've actually reached, they've already gotten back to me as far as what they have, which is a tier program. So with that, I can start to help build this program, but if, you know, like you were saying, Mayor, that at this time, there is no cadet program in place. There should, therefore should be no cadets inside the firehouse.
Any questions from council on the fire chief's report? All right, so we'll be working with him on the requirements to get that program back in place. And again, it will come to council for approval as a new program being offered by, by the department. Next report is Public Works.
I don't have anything to add, except we did work on the Christmas lights and banners. Alliance is gonna replace one power pole near the historical society parking lot, so we did not put the snowflake up there until they come to replace that pole. And the banner that goes across Main Street, they shipped us two lefts and no rights, or two rights and no lefts, whatever, so we had to take it back and do, do a little modification. So hopefully tomorrow morning, we'll have the banner complete. We had to stop today because we couldn't make it connect, so. Not a big deal, just a little, little out of grief.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, we, we scratched our head a long time, and there was no way to make it up in the bucket, holding it above the, the cable, so had to, had to come down and go to the shop, so.
And I just wanna thank the Public Works team, it's been incredible what we've been able to get done, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for getting this stuff to work with, right?
Yeah. And we did get rid of the old Christmas lights, by the way.
Please tell me we, we passed them on to someone new who could be like the fifth owner.
The gentleman lives out on the farm, and he just wanted some really large decorations, and I said, "Take them all." And he did, and he did.
Love it.
We're good.
Any questions for Public Works? Hearing none, city council report.
I don't have anything to add to my report at this time. Something that I did bring up to the mayor is a possible increase in the delinquent fee. Right now, it's $10. The issue is that it's probably costing us more than $10 to send out things and processing time and everything else like that. So down the road, maybe look at an increase in that, make it a little more hopeful that people don't actually want to be delinquent. That's all.
I don't wanna be picky, I just wanna be very clear. So you have your section for ordinance violations. It says six new ordinances were completed, those are nuisances.
Sorry, nuisances?
No, it's good.
You're correct.
I, I wrote it in bent, but I was like, just wanna be clear, we did not implement any new ordinances.
No, we did not do six, yeah, I think I've just been doing too many ordinances.
No, it's just...
Yeah, but thank you for making that. I'll make sure to modify that, appreciate it.
Questions for clerk? All right, and treasurer's report.
And treasurer's report, we're still looking extremely strong. You know, as was mentioned, we are currently working on the budgets. So again, as much information as I can get is gonna help me narrow those budgets down so that we've got accurate numbers. So, yeah, just looking forward, moving forward. Other than that, we're doing very good.
I just wanna pull out one note, we, Chris and I, and I believe both staff members, we have a meeting with the Otter Creek Township this coming Saturday. So this represents our annual meeting to review, for our 2080, to review calls for service, budget, where the money's been spent throughout the year, and then see if they have any questions or concerns. And I would also be presenting the donation agreement, which will then, I believe, council-approved, so. And I've gotta get that in front of our fire association yet. I've gotta find out when their next meeting is, because they don't meet as often as our fire department does, so.
Mayor, I, I probably should have brought this up during the fire report, but the chief and two of the firefighters and I met Tuesday night, I think it was, and just started discussion on, on a truck replacement for 135. So really can't do much more until that meeting Saturday is over and, and some more discussions are made. But it's something that we're finding out, there are trucks available that can be, aren't built yet, but we could get our name on them and have them by end of first quarter next year. But we're gonna have to move if we decide we're gonna do it and get our name on it. So it could possibly, I don't know if January meeting is gonna be soon enough, but once we know where we're at with the township, that we should be able to make an informed decision, possibly a short special if need be, if we wanna move that fast. If not, we just wait for the, the next round, so.
What do you mean by the next round?
Oh, it basically, what it boils down to is chassis coming into the manufacturers, and they're only coming so often, right? So...
It could be six months or nine months.
Yeah, right, right. And right now, there's three companies that have chassis that don't have anybody's name on, and, and so that's, that's what it boils down to, is that they're gonna, they're in the production pipeline, not anywhere near being built yet, but if we put our name on it, then we can, it will be ours when it's done. So they have a spot in their, in their production.
I don't know if you guys are aware, but 135 went down, we're not fixing it. So that's our pumper truck, the one that holds water. Am I right?
It's a, it's a pumper, yes.
Yeah, it's a pumper, it's, it's, we're not fixing it, it's old, it can't get parts there. So we're having to look at it differently.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? All right, move on to consent agenda, any changes, additions, removals?
No.
That I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Schultz, second by Myers, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, new business, 15A, we already did earlier in the agenda. So we are on to 15B, which is discuss plat, Winfield's seventh edition request. You have the plat in your packet.
This is almost just a, a just-in-case scenario by the owners. They're moving some property lines. It's, it's clear out on the edge of the two-mile radius that we have to consider. So they decided maybe it was best if they saw our, they don't even know if they're gonna build. But with the change of property line, then that potentially makes a building, a buildable area. It's, again, full two miles from town west, so.
And I think we had one of these a couple of months ago, not last month, but the month of four. And just to remind everyone, the reason that the city approves anything within the two-mile radius is just to ensure that it be in line with any future development. And obviously, this far out, if you actually look at the plat, it can be quite difficult to read. There's quite a bit of flood plain, probably not anything of any potential that the city would need to be worried about.
Their, their words were just in case, you know, since they're doing all the survey work right now, so.
So I would seek a motion to approve the Winfield's seventh edition plat.
So moved.
Moved by Myers?
Second.
Seconded by Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Discuss Public Works' equipment purchase at auction.
Last time I did, got ground ready by the fire station and seated, I was able to borrow a piece of equipment from Wayne Blackford to do it. I just bumped into him a couple of weeks ago and said, "I'm probably going to need that back because I, we're moving the filter and I'm going to..." Oh, we sent it to scrap because they don't use it, it's too small for them. So I remembered that Hog Auction Coggin is having their fall equipment sale. There's a John Deere disc on the sale that would be a good item for prepping that ground for use. It's hard to find, it's only 14 feet wide, so our tractor can pull it. It's just one of those deals where the farmer's equipment is so big anymore that it's hard to borrow or even ask someone to come in and do it because they're 30 foot wide. Equipment, et cetera, is too much. Dave Kirk actually went and looked at it, I mentioned it to him. He thinks it'll sell for $4,000. I don't, we don't need it that badly. I just thought if we could get it bought for a couple thousand dollars, it'd be a good piece of equipment to have. It's not costing us much and would have quite a bit of use. If it goes over that, we'll figure something out, so. Not a, not a real heavy necessity, but it's fairly rare that a disc that size that can be pulled by our smaller tractor comes available without doing a bunch of searching and a bunch of traveling around the country to find it, so.
We have funds available and equipment reserve easily to do that amount.
And it's, it's likely that it'll bring more than that, so probably pretty good chance it's an online auction. Online and in person, so I don't even have to be there to do that.
Would this, what other uses would this have?
I mean, it would, until we get the park completely laid out and done, I would use it through every aspect. And quite honestly, unless there was something else on the horizon, we can turn around and sell the thing once that was done. You know, not something I feel like we.
That's what I was curious about. Would, would probably just recoup some of that money?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And it's, and there could be other ones come up, who knows? It's just one of those deals where I scrolled through the auction and there it was. And I drove up there real quick and looked at it and it's excellent shape, so it wouldn't break down on us. But again, not tied to it. If you're not interested, I'm totally okay with that, too, so. Only other issue is I can't rent, I can't rent a tiller, a three-point tiller to go on our tractor because the ones that the rental places have are all too small for our category of three-point hitch. Because our tractor's just bigger than the average landscape tractor. So I can't, I can't do that either. And 3.8 foot rototillers are $5,000, you know, for, for a new one. And you can't hardly ever find a used one. So the disc is kind of the, a little bit of a compromise, a little less money invested. And we'll easily resell if, if we get to a point where we're not using it, so.
How big, how big a disc are you talking?
It's only 14 feet.
14 feet?
We only have a 95 horsepower tractor, so.
Well, our disc is only about 12 feet, I think. I'd have to measure it, you know.
It's a pleasure of the council.
You can use it anytime, as far as I'm concerned.
So you're saying you would let us use it, huh?
Huh?
You would let us use it?
We're not using it.
Write it to us.
I don't want to write it, I'll just let you use it.
I don't care, it's just hard to find. You got to talk to 100 people before you find the right one and just so happens you're here, you're right.
Well, would we want to approve this if, in the event that one does not work for us?
The auction is Saturday, that's the only problem. It's this Saturday, so.
Are you asking for an amount?
Yeah, I was going to say 2,000, no, no more than 2,000. I, I wouldn't want to get any more than that invested. So if it brings 2,500, then so be it, we're not going to, we're not going to own it. That's the way I would approach it, you know, that's what I would ask for, so.
In the meantime, can you look at that one?
Yeah, I can go in the morning because I'd have to get approved a bid online tomorrow. So I could run out and look at Larry's tomorrow. And if, if that's going to be a usable item, we'll just drop it. But basically, we'd have to, you know, I'm sure probably it's.
I don't know, you, you may want a bigger disc.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I want the small, I want the small, yeah. Or maybe we can work something out to buy it from Larry if he's not using it anymore or something, you know, eventually.
You can use it.
Now we have a quandary.
Well.
I'd go ahead and approve the.
Approve.
Approve it, just in case, that way you don't have to.
Yeah.
We're covered.
So you can say what?
I would say we approve guy up to $2,000 to buy the disc.
In the event that that one does not.
Right.
If that one doesn't pan out for Larry.
Yep.
Is that a model?
I'm all over that.
We're talking over tomorrow.
Yep. Okay.
The group motion, motion by Bozenberg, seconded by Trump to approve up to $2,000 contingent upon inspection of the equipment that was graciously volunteered. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Alright, 15D, discuss digital sign policies and procedures.
Currently, right now, that sign, I've got it programmed on my phone to be able to change whatever signage would be there. There is one other person, she's on Lions Club.
Burke, Burke is Secretary of the Lions.
Yeah, so she has access as well. We did want to make sure to limit access because we just don't want anybody to start buying, changing the sign. And I've offered that anytime they have any questions, they can text me if they want something thrown out, whatever. The discussion that we need to have now is, currently it is only for nonprofits. Do we want to keep it that way? Do we want to open it eventually up to where we can do, say a business would like to put their name up there? I will strongly encourage that, doing this, keep in mind that it can really only flash for about three to five seconds. And the, we're limited on what we can write, we can't just write a book up there.
Do we have any feedback from the Lions Club on what, if they had any intended use for this before they gave it to the city?
The whole conversation started because the vet clinic, when they had their, decided they were going to have an open house after some staff change, they approached the Lions Club, even with the old sign, asking if they could advertise their open house on the sign, which opened up the discussion at the Lions Club about, do we keep this nonprofit? It has always been just nonprofit, community events. There's never been, to my knowledge, or any Lions Club members' knowledge, any business advertisement on that old sign ever. They were feeling, well, what's it going to hurt? But then if you take it a step further and you get into the Christmas season and Folgers wants to put Wayne Night up there and the Vet Clinic's having another open house and Lefties has a special and Mike's got a band and then there's five, the churches, both churches and the Historical Society have an event going on. You're getting dizzy trying to read. And then also, if you're going to allow a business to advertise there, you really should charge them. If that's the case, then you have to come up with a fee schedule. And if that's the case, then, I mean, it sounds like it's getting muddy to me, is.
How many rotating messages can you have up there?
Up to 11. I would not go that far, but yes, you can do up to 11. But again, it is limited to four lines and can't remember the characters. I want to say it's, it's something like 11 to 12 characters going across is the max. It can't do anything like spinny or emoji or anything like, it's literally just the text. So if you're thinking about somebody driving through town, you've got maybe, maybe a minute if they stop at the stoplight that they're looking at that sign or that they might see that sign. So that's why I'm saying the three-second rule really applies, three to five seconds.
You're going to, you're going to get through three or four messages while you're driving through. But you could actually read, yeah.
And to make it worth the while, I would even limit the inventory, the number of messages that we put up there.
Absolutely.
Because nobody would want to pay for something that gets seen three seconds every minute.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you'd want to go down that route of having paid advertisements up there. I mean, you're crossing over into a completely different thing than that sign was originally intended. Even though the, the Lions Club did take this request from the Vet Clinic, it's, it's a bunch, it's a community service group just trying to be nice people. But yet it opened this conversation up, I mean, the.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate, though, in that we don't have that many businesses. This isn't a Cedar Epitomary, I mean, we, we've listed all five. And, you know, it would be an easy source of revenue if it were to get utilized. It doesn't cost us, the sign's already running, it doesn't cost us any of that.
Limit them one week, no more than one week a month to advertise, so they can't monopolize the entire month. Limit the number of rotations on there so that they do, you know, so that all messages can get seen. It's not just, you know, ads, 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 and then the one community message and then more ads, you know. We just have to make sure it's not something that is, is, is an ad revenue, you know, that we're looking at it that way, but certainly if there is an. If there is an event, then we should have it. If, you know, like a weekly special, yeah, I wouldn't.
If you make it just expensive enough, they would only want to use it for an event.
And that was the other thing, is that we were thinking of making it, you know, what is it, 200 for, you know, one to put up there? They're not going to want, and then how long do they keep it up there at that price?
Yeah. And that's the other part of the equation is, as the owners of the sign, even though the Lions Club raised the money for it, someone here is going to have to hammer out this entire policy.
Right.
Because the Lions Club is not going to participate in that, you know, and.
And I, I appreciate that the, and I'm purely playing devil's advocate, I don't know if I've really decided one way or the other. I appreciate that they raised the money. Our businesses are extremely generous within this community. And so I, I don't want to be like Gert Business because they give to all of our nonprofits as well. They are, you know, we, we ran a nonprofit event and Lefties donated, you know, cases of water. So they're, they're also extremely generous in, in dealing with the community and the community's nonprofits.
I think you want to keep it in the community of anybody in the community and nobody outside the community. You know, if you don't get an insurance company from Marion, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it has to be a business based here.
Or it could be limited to like special events, like the car show or this or that, rather than the Saturday Act specials.
That's true.
So it sounds like there's some interest in possibly pulling together scenarios where we do allow some business advertising with guidelines. And I think that's worth at least hammering out and presenting some options back.
I will do the research and present that next time.
I would leave this to council, whether we want to take action tonight or not. I would say for the time being, the standard is nonprofits only. So that, this isn't the highest of priorities, or you. We are coming into budget season, holidays budget, you're going to be busy for a while, so. I don't know if you need a motion on that or if that's the understanding as of today. And anything above and beyond is what we're, we're going to do.
This is just supposed to be a discussion, so that you're good.
Yep.
I did on it, thanks.
Okay. Perfect. Any other discussion on that before we close that out? More to come. 15E, discuss CD, BG, VR grant application. Is there more you need to cover because I have two sub-bullets for the resolutions? Or is there anything else Tracy has to say as part of this meeting?
Nope, just everything that has to be signed was in your packet, I believe. And so I would, some of it, as you saw in your packet, Dan has to sign as a developer. In addition, and has to, on the project assurances and developer assurances, has to mark those. So Chris, I, these are all originals with color. Can I just leave them with you?
Absolutely.
To get both of the signatures and then, and I will only just say whatever you want me to say.
Well, my only, we have the resolutions to take action on. There are several other items in your packet.
Yeah.
The only one, Tracy, that I have a takeaway is on the service agreement. I would like to get that reviewed by our lawyer before I sign. So before I enter into any contract, we, the resolution is fine, authorizing me, I'm good with that. But the actual document itself, I think we'll send over to legal for review.
As long as they do it before I submit the app, because I have to have a pre-app.
Yep.
Yep, so we'll make sure they get that.
And just so you know, that we do a contract, if you're awarded funding as the resolution states, we do a contract for our services. Basically, the reason for this is you have to lock in that we're going to do the project delivery. It's paid with CDVG dollars as the resolution states. And then, and we don't charge to do the application as long as you use us to administer the grant. It's a standard one we use for all of our CDVG applications and.
Why did you just roll it off like that? I got to think about those letters and they just, they just come out.
I think it has something to do with 30 years.
Repetition, repetition, repetition.
I believe that's what it is. So anyway, that's just, so we'll have a contract. If you get awarded funds, then we'll have a contract that will be longer and have all the federal verbiage. And the purpose of this one really is to just, I have to have it for the application to show that you are going to use us to do the administration and, and then really the reason for it. Most of the time, we do it earlier and as you know, this all happened very quickly. Most of the time, we do it before we start working on an application so that we know we're going to be administering the grant if it's awarded. And if you're not awarded, there's nothing, obviously, that you end up paying. It's a service that we provide to our, to our communities.
Yeah, the service agreement for council, that's page 25, is the only thing, I want to make sure. I just don't enter into any contracts unless our lawyer has reviewed it, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I just have to have it before the app goes in.
Yep, it should, it's a one pager, it should be a pretty quick turnaround, but everything else looks good, so. I do think we might have some pages out of order, but we'll get the, we'll get the originals and see what that looks like, yeah.
I presented them the way I am.
Well, the other thing is.
There's a few of them that don't read, I'm like, I don't feel like that's in the right order.
The federal assurances, I noticed after I sent it that the first, I don't forget, up at the top.
That's, that's the one, yeah.
It said CIT, not the city of Albernate, but this original has CIT.
I knew you were reading the original, so.
Yeah. So, and then you can just scan all of it back to me.
That's what I'll do.
Once it's all signed. And Dan will have to sign some of them. And then, I just want to point out, pardon me, these all have to be checked. And these all have to be checked by Dan, okay?
So, excuse me, and the subrogation agreement, I would make sure the lawyers reviewed that as well. But I can pass those over to them.
And that one, there won't be any change, I can tell you that, because that's an IEBA form.
Okay.
It's probably a federal form, actually, so it will be. And I think it's contingent upon award, too, you know, because IEBA signs it, they're not going to sign it unless they award funds. So it will be something else. But it's something that they have to know, that you're saying that if you receive any other funds to help pay for this project, federal or state, that you would report it, you know, that you're not going to duplicate, that you're not going to use funds for this project, the CDVG VR funds. But that's, you know, you apply to another grant source that pays for the project, you're saying that you're not, so.
And that would be separate if we were to pursue the same grant for the generator. Those are two different things. This is just.
I'm going to guess, right, I'm going to guess that the subrogation agreement for the generator probably looks similar, but I, I can't say that.
But this only applies if we receive additional grant funds for this project.
That's right.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, they're not going to, I have to include it with your application. And I like to have cities know exactly when going in, that it's not, you know, but I have to include it in there. But obviously, they have to sign it, too, and they're not signing it unless you're awarded. So it's just something that has to go with the app.
Does the generator, is that same deadline?
The generator program, they, I had lunch yesterday with the guys from Iowa Economic Development that are doing this program. And they said they're thinking that it's going to roll out fairly soon.
Oh, it's not even available.
And then it will be due by the end of January, I think, the application.
So a little, little bit of heat is off on to get that wedged into this, too. The boy won't have to go in at the same time as.
Right, but you will have some of this stuff you'll have to go through.
Because it sounds like it's going to come. Because it sounds like it's gonna come.
Yeah, you need to, yeah.
Okay, well, I just need to know how hard a pass we need to go, yeah.
Yeah, and it'll be the same thing for that program, I believe, that we would do the application for you, you know. That's, because with CDBG projects at the state, you have to be certified to do CDBG administration, and so there's not many folks outside of the council of governments that do that, so.
You folks are fantastic, so.
Well, I don't know, it's, I wanted, when we had to do the training, I mean, I've worked with CBBG program for almost thirty years, when they made me do the training this year, I wanted to poke my eyes out, I mean, it was like, oh my lord, it was awful, but anyway.
Right, any other questions regarding the CDBG grant application?
Thank you for your assistance.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome, it's going to be very competitive. They, I might have told you this last time, but they decided not to differentiate between Cedar Rapids and communities outside of Cedar Rapids. And I do know that the city of Cedar Rapids has received enough applications to spend all the money. So it will just be a matter of how many projects they'll fund outside of Cedar Rapids. Our office alone is submitting ten to eleven, so outside of Cedar Rapids. Generally, I, I don't, I have a pretty high percentage rate of being successful in writing grant applications, but I know in this round, I have to dial that back, because I don't know how many they'll end up awarding. But you're very welcome, that's what we do.
All right. We will look at E, sub bullet one, which is discuss adoption of resolution twenty-two-two-ten. And this is authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments, ECI cog, to submit application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Direct Show Housing Program, CD BG DR, to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. That is the resolution on the table.
Can you repeat that?
Play it forward.
Moved by Schatz. Second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Second one, even easier. Resolution twenty-two-two-ten is authorizing mayor to sign service agreement with East Central Iowa Council of Governments, ECI cog, for the CD BG DR application preparation, and for the administration and project delivery of the CDBG Dr. grant, if awarded. That is the resolution on the table. As noted, I will be sending the service agreement to the lawyer for review before signing, so this is just the authorization for me to sign from you all. Moved by Myers. Second by Bosenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Now the additional work begins.
That's right.
That's right.
Depended a lot on.
I wanna say the real work.
Depended a lot on these guys providing me stuff, so I can do it. Thanks, and I hope, I was here last month, I hope I don't have to be back in January. But, you know, if I'm needed, I will be, thank you a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Have any idea when they will be awarded?
That's a good question, gosh, you ask good questions. I think what they're thinking, what he told me yesterday at lunch, is they're thinking that they will probably be awarded by the end of January. That's what their hope is. Because they all require environmental review, and that process takes quite a while, and they also wanna see projects get done as soon as possible, so they're hoping to have it awarded, so that we can start doing the environmental review process on the projects that are funded, so, yeah. And good luck with your, with your generator one.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a good deal.
I'll email you, and you can.
And then I'll forward it to Jen, yeah, yeah, to connect you, sure.
That'd be great, appreciate that.
We get on to fifteen, actually, that should be fifteen F, which is discuss the scholarship fund.
He has a lot of stuff, but he has it around.
For the Iowa Rural Water Association. We did discuss this at our last meeting, but we tabled it, because our clerk wasn't available to kinda help us understand, or do the research on where that funding might come from. So I will turn it over to both of you.
Yeah, they did.
Basically, just they ask you to contribute something, because it really did benefit my daughter greatly, and I think it's a great program, and we continue to give her money in trainings, that, you know, my daughter didn't go into water wastewater, but.
Don't ignore my emails.
That's also part of the problem, there weren't enough kids going into water wastewater to actually give all the scholarship funds to those, but in ten years, they said we're gonna be in desperate situation with water wastewater operators, because there's a whole bunch of fifty-five to sixty-five year olds that are gonna retire out, and it's gonna be ugly, so that's my motivation for seeing if we can do a little something for this. And if Chris found out from Connie, right, that this is okay to do, and.
We just take it out of our proprietary, proprietary funds for water, because it's considered revenue that we, yeah, so we can.
Not out of the general.
Right, so we get anywhere between five hundred or two thousand that we can donate.
And I don't have a dollar amount in mind, that's completely up to you. Just, if something is possible, if you're willing, I just feel like it'd be great. And again, IRWA provides me with all the training. There are other sources, but that's basically where I get all of my CEU training, et cetera, conferences.
Not to base it off of what other towns do, but to base it off what other towns do, do you know how much do they contribute?
No, that doesn't ever get discussed.
Really?
Yeah, we don't hear about it anyway. It was still known.
Yeah, I, there's, I mean, I'd have to go to another town and say, hey, have you ever heard of this, what have you done?
Yeah, and then the next town, and then the next town.
Yeah.
I would say knowing approximately what Taylor received.
It was kind of, yeah.
I think she said it was around two thousand, twenty-five hundred. I mean, if we went that high, we're, you have to think, there are ninety-nine counties in Iowa, how many cities, I don't know if we need to self-fund a student to this kind of merger on that, so.
No, not that, not that level, absolutely not. I actually.
And that kinda gives you a gauge of.
Yeah.
But it's like a cumulative scholarship.
Yeah, we're putting it into the fund, so, yeah, of the ninety-nine counties in Iowa, I don't think Albernett needs to self-fund a scholarship.
Yeah, right, scholarship awarding, it's just a, you know. Couple hundred bucks would be meaningful, you know, whatever, I don't, I don't even know what to say. I don't, to make a suggestion to you, whatever, whatever you think, but. And I don't know, I'd love to know, I probably, you know, I just thought of that, I should've called Scott Stover, who is the chief at IRWA, he probably could've given me some insight as to broad numbers, how many cities actually do donate, maybe roughly what the average, I should've done that, but. I mean, anything is, would be appreciated by the scholarship fund, I'm sure, so.
For the council?
I think we donate two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty dollars.
What, thousand?
Nope, I heard two hundred.
I don't have that this year.
Motion by Trump to donate two hundred.
We're gonna have to up those water rates again.
Two hundred and fifty dollars to the Iowa Rural Water Association Scholarship Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Myers, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. That one carries.
Thank you.
All right, old business. Ordinance twenty-two-two-two, this is the second reading of the amendment to the Property Maintenance Code. Questions, comments, concerns? I would seek a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-two, an amendment to the Property Maintenance Code. Moved by Myers. Second by Trump, do this by roll call, please.
Councilman Trump, aye. Councilman Bosenberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schatz?
Aye.
Councilman Myers?
Aye.
All right. That is our second reading, we are required to do three readings, unless the council so chooses to waive. So I would seek a motion to suspend the rule, requiring that an ordinance be voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be passed with respect to ordinance number twenty-two-two-two. This would allow this to go into effect on January one of twenty-two-three. So moved by Myers.
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? So this is just waiving the third reading. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. I don't have to roll call that one, do I? I don't think so, it's just a motion. All right, same item, motion to approve the final reading, passage, and adoption with respect to ordinance number twenty-two-two-two. Nope, nope, we're still on two.
Oh, so, okay, yeah.
This is motion to approve the final reading, passage, and adoption with respect to ordinance twenty-two-two-two, so this is final reading, moved by Trump. Second by Bosenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I can get you that language, Chris.
Appreciate you.
I have it written down. No, I, those are additional, we said we'll print out, so I've got it written down. All right. Item sixteen B, ordinance twenty-two-two-three, this is the second reading of the housing code. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? So this is a brand new chapter. Hearing none, I would seek a motion to approve the second reading of the housing code, ordinance twenty-two-two-three. Moved by Trump, second by Myers, any further discussion? Although, roll call, please.
Councilman Trump?
Aye.
Councilman Bosenberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schatz?
I'm trying to figure this out. Is this the one for the rental?
Yes.
I can say name.
Okay. And Councilman Myers?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I would seek a motion to suspend the rule, requiring that an ordinance be voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be passed with respect to ordinance number twenty-two-two-three, therefore making it effective on January first of twenty-two-three. Moved by Myers. Second by Trump. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Motion to approve the final reading, passage, and adoption with respect to ordinance number twenty-two-two-three. Final reading and passage. Moved by Bosenberg. Second by Myers, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, sixteen C, review the twenty-eight E agreement between Lynn County and City of Albernett for property maintenance inspections. Nothing changed, so you had this in your last packet or the packet before, can't recall which. That was a draft version, I got approval from you at that time to take it back to Lynn County. We had made changes, they sent them as one document for property maintenance and inspection, and the programs are drastically different, and so we split them into two separate documents, got your approval on the draft, sent them back to Lynn County, who has approved our changes. These are now final, so I'm seeking your action to approve the agreements. They do have a January one start date as well, if we choose to do that this evening, and then Lynn County will approve them at their next Board of Supervisors meeting. I can't remember if she put the, I believe she put the ordinance number in, yes. So under four procedures and fees, there is a resolution number from the Lynn County Board of Supervisors that has now been referenced. So these are complete agreements, ready for your action. But nothing changed, nothing material changed since the last time you've seen them. Any questions on the twenty-eight E for property maintenance? All right, I would seek a motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement between Lynn County and City of Albernett for property maintenance inspections. Moved by Myers. Second by Trump, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D is to review the twenty-eight E agreement between Lynn County and City of Albernett for rental housing inspections, same story.
So moved.
Moved by Trump, second by Bosenberg, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, sixteen E, City Hall renovation update. So we got your approval last time on the proposed budget. We met with our architect, he is back from medical leave, it was good to see him. I haven't gotten an update yet, so I'm gonna turn it over to the staff here in a second, but they are ready to move forward, so we essentially have just a few things to maybe pick out as far as solidifying the bid. They were supposed to be out yesterday to look at, and bring their structural engineer to look at the awning, and what all it was gonna take, and get us back some pricing. I've not seen anything, were they able to make it?
They were, they were here yesterday. Brian was talking week to ten days to have everything hammered out, because the structural engineer would get his recommendation to Brian right away, and Brian's just waiting to input that information into his program, and he's gonna have a final set of plans here shortly.
So there were two things they were looking at, the beam, so we're gonna run a beam down the middle to alleviate those two posts, and make that more of an open space. So the structural engineer was sizing that beam, because Brian just had a guesstimate in there for the original proposal, and then that awning feature, we asked them to, to still get it priced out, but essentially, he was given direction that that's not where we wanna spend money, so. Odds are that'll be eliminated, but they're at least gonna give us the line item.
Be interesting to know if the building was supported, though I, that's just the geek in me, I'd be interested in knowing if it was supported.
Yeah, they're gonna give us the line item, we've looked at other alternatives also, so if anything, that estimate you've seen is going to go down, that would reflect that change in that awning.
How far did that awning come out, do you recall?
I think it was four feet.
I was gonna say three, three or four.
That was kind of a metal projection out there.
Yeah, it was completely horizontal, I mean, we asked about snow load and.
That's where the engineer came in, to see if the building, I mean, they're gonna be tearing into the front of that building, kinda to put the beam in and stuff, so, I mean, yeah, I don't know, I'm just on fence whether it would've worked or not, so.
Yeah, and I think they're still gonna price it out for us, but it was purely cosmetic.
Even with the, we're talking about putting a slope car on it.
Yeah, like a standard steel.
You gotta make sure that there's gonna be a gutter or something around it.
Yep, and we can still put lettering and signage above it, lights underneath, so it's just the, we don't need to over, over-engineer it, yeah. So it sounds like they will have something pretty solid, oh, no, it was bid in January.
Yeah, he wants to be on, he asked for agenda space on January, because it'll, for you to approve sending it to bid, so you'll get to review the plans, send it to bid, and have a date somewhere just short of the February meeting to open bids, and award a bid at the February meeting, so in theory, there could be somebody working on it in March, is still planned, so.
And he does estimate it's about a four to six month project, more likely leaning towards four months.
Yeah, so by December, early fall, it could be in.
Could be good.
Any questions on City Hall renovation? More to come then. I believe that is the end of our packet and the end of our agenda, so I will go to final comments and discussion, and start with Counselor Trump. Counselor Bosenberg? Counselor Schatz, Counselor Myers?
Have a great New Year.
Yeah.
We'll be here before we know it.
Yeah.
City Clerk, anything to add?
I do not.
Public Works? All right. I also have nothing to add, so with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Myers. Second by Trump, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.